The third regularly scheduled meeting of Lynn City Council Madam Clerk Roque.
Counsel Bud.
Present.
Present Counsel Cahill.
Present.
Present Counsel Capano.
Present.
Present Counsel Jacutus.
Present.
Present Counsel Calucci.
Present.
Present Counsel Crichton.
Present.
Present Counsel Sia.
Present.
Present Counsel Floyd.
Present.
Present Counsel Lozey.
Present.
Present Counsel Net, absent Counsel Trahan, absent.
I'd just like to make an announcement. Counselor Net was here earlier. He wasn't feeling well, so he's home now. Also Counselor Trahan is out there plowing the streets of Lynn and he's unable to make it, but we're aware of what we're doing here tonight. We hope he can clean up the entire city overnight. Would you please stand for a moment of silence? Mr. President, I'd like to have this moment of silence in recognition of Frank Valeri who passed away sadly this past week, his daughter Mary Ann O'Connell, John, son John Valeri, son Frank Valeri. Frank was a great guy, very active in the community, will be greatly missed. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance is that I am an honest citizen of America, who do the republic, who stands hands, one nation, my heart, my heart, I do visible, with liberty, justice, for all. And we are here in the auditorium today. There has been some structural issues in the City Council Chamber, so this is why we were sent down here last minute, so we appreciate you accommodating us, the audience, and for those responsible for helping us put this together. We are motioning to accept the minutes for the January 20th meeting. Should be, seconded, those who say aye, opposed, no, the ayes have it. Open hearings.
First petition is petition A, Starroto Sales for an Adino with approval for permission for a second-class dealer's license at 1117 Feet, Westman Avenue.
I'm going to open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor, understanding that you do not have a microphone, but we can hear you from up here, so if you'd like to speak in favor, just please state your name, your address, and make a statement. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one wishing to speak in favor, I'm going to close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Open the public hearing for those in opposition. Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Seeing no one in opposition, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition, I close the public hearing. Counselor Capano.
Yes, I spoke to Mr. Craig, work of the owner there, and I checked out the area. It's a great spot across the G D for a business like this, and I would like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, Roque.
Counsel Bud.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Jacutus.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Crichton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Sia.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Floyd.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net, absent Counsel Trahan, absent. Motion passes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Next petition, petition of Mocha Coffee Company, DBA Cafe Mocha, Yaco Settling, permission for this grant with an all-alcohol license at 56 Central Avenue.
I'm going to open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one wishing to speak in favor, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition, I close the public hearing. Counselor Jacutus.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made to approve and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, Roque.
Counsel Bud.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Jacutus.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Crichton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Sia.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Floyd.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey.
Present.
Present Counsel Net, absent Counsel Trahan, absent. Next petition is petition of Soria Market, Zumi, Hain, Kai, permission for assigned permit at 551 Summer Street.
I'm going to open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. If you could just state your name and your address for the record. If you can yell to the dial.
My name is Luis Francis, and I'm the DBA Francis Science, uh, sign contractor, and yeah, there's 271 Westman Avenue, Suite PR 10. Uh, just here to see if you guys have any question about how the beyond is constructed and how it's about beyond.
If there is any questions, if you can sit in the front row, they'd be helpful, in that way if there are any questions from the council, we can have it. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one wishing to speak in favor, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition, I close the public hearing. Counsel Ford.
Motion approved.
Motion was made to approve and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, Roque.
Counsel Bud.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Jacutus.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Crichton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Sia.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Floyd.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net, absent Counsel Trahan, absent, nine yes.
Okay, final public hearing.
Petition of Comcast Timothy Broder for permission to install from existing manhole at intersection of Oxford Street and Washington Street. Place one four-inch PVC conduit two hundred plus or minus speed in southwesterly direction down Washington Street, and place vault and sidewalk at rear of ten to twenty Central Avenue, one thirty McGraw Street. From new vault, place two four-inch PVC conduits ten feet plus or minus in an off-lane direction to properties of ten to twenty Central Avenue, one thirty McGraw Street.
Open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Mr. Broder.
Good evening. Tom Broder, Comcast, fifty-five Comcast Street, not a great, uh, petition to answer the question.
Thank you, Mr. Broder. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one wishing to speak in favor, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. Opposition, opposition. Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. I close the public hearing. Counselor Jacutus.
Motion to approve with the stipulation issues while on the streets repaved to curb to curb without having shaken over.
Motion has been made to approve with said stipulations, and I agree with seconded Counsel Calucci. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Roque.
Counsel Bud.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Jacutus.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Crichton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Sia.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Floyd.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net, absent Counsel Trahan, absent, nine yes.
I have a motion to suspend the rules briefly. Motion made, seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, those who say aye, opposed, no, the ayes have it. The rules are suspended. Counselor Bud, you can take the floor.
Um, at this time, I'm going to have Chief McCall talk for a bit about the hazardous, what's going on in the city, and after that, Captain Tommy Heinrich will speak.
Thank you, Counselors. I just want to give you a brief outline of what's been going on with the fire department since the snow started a couple weeks ago. Um, we've, we've used social media to the nth degree to gain any assistance we can on fire hydrants, uh, take care of elderly neighbors and your neighbors, uh, and we've been pretty successful at it, but every time we get one step forward, it's two steps back for the last couple of weeks. But we're back at it again today after the snow stopped sometime early this morning. We were back up this afternoon doing the hydrants. They're out there tonight. They're a traffic burden, I understand, uh, but we have to get those things uncovered. I've directed my companies to get as many done as they can. Uh, I know that I may get a hundred percent of them, but I asked them to do a strategic plan with it. Uh, if there's twelve on the street, get fifty percent of them if they can, at least we'll have some places to hook up the water. So we're in pretty good shape. Uh, our vehicles are doing pretty well. Our manpower's doing pretty well. I beefed up manpower for the last three weeks. Uh, hopefully through Tom's help, we may get some, some funds back after a state emergency was declared. So we're in pretty good shape, and if anybody has any questions along those lines, we'll try to answer them.
Chief, Bud, you talk a little bit about snow on roofs, how important it is to get the snow on roofs and, and what's going to happen around the state.
Yeah, we've also been going pretty heavy on social media about the dangers of the snow load on roofs. Uh, we have direct experience with, uh, those situations a couple of years ago, the building down at three thirty, the Illinois, the Gliss Building, uh, so they're very susceptible, very vulnerable, flat roof, most of the commercial-type buildings, uh, and schools, you know, I think that when I talked to Kathy Latham, Dr. Latham, the next time I talked to her, I was going to suggest to her that she has to be looking at the roofs of the schools, because most of them are all continuous flat roofs, very large buildings, so, um, we have put out on social media, um, you know, we made it known that snow loads on roofs are very dangerous, and they should probably hire some people to do it. I know a lot of roofing companies are doing it. They're not cheap, but anything they can do to lighten the snow load on the roof is going to be advantageous to everybody. Uh, around the state, starting yesterday, uh, I'm kind of surprised it took so long, the snow's been so light. If it was ever a wet snow, we'd be in big trouble. Uh, starting yesterday, they started dropping down the South Shore. They had five yesterday in the South Shore. They had a couple in Worcester County today, a couple more down in, uh, Norfolk County, south of Washington, personal county down in Fall River, so that they're starting, these events start to occur, and we're, we're just as susceptible as they are, so we're, we're very cautious in knowing, and we're making everybody aware.
Chief, one other thing, uh, Counsel Sia brought it to my attention. He's seen kids, uh, making poachers out of the snow, how dangerous is that?
Well, basically, a lot of them are right parallel or with, right, uh, buddy to the street, so it's, it's not a good, not a good scenario. Uh, being informed about that, I will make sure that when we put our next bullet out on social media, that will be one of the topics.
Counsel Lozey.
Yes, Chief, I want to commend you and the Lynn Fire Department. I've noticed that what reflects the Fire Department, new hires, that these young guys are out there showing inside themselves. They are doing a terrific job, so I want to thank you for that, and you serve us with that.
Well, it takes the support of everybody. We had the council's support when we came forward with the request to, to fund our part of the loans on, uh, the grants. And we had, you know, we had a percentage of, uh, debt that we had to pay for the grants, and it was through your approval also, so thank you too.
Which did you get?
It's my argument. What's that? Um, also, the topic that Tom's going to refresh on, I support it all highly, and, you know, I ask for your support on that also. Uh, it's an asset, it will be an asset for us going forward with emergency management events, and even some civic events, if the need arises to use the vehicle that we're going to discuss right now. Thank you very much.
And now we have on my Captain Heinrich. Um, I want to, I want to start first and then go on.
Hi everyone, thanks for having me here tonight. I'd like to report that the last three major snowstorms we've had, we've had great collaboration and coordination through all the city departments. Um, one thing we did is, uh, for the storms, we met, communicated frequently, planned accordingly to be stormed. The first one on January twenty-sixth, second one on February second, and now we just had it on February eighth. Um, all our actions to see were coordinated with parking beds, school closings, and all the implications to make those things fit, and keeping in mind the public safety and also public convenience, kind of balance those two. Uh, for the first snowstorm, January twenty-sixth, that was, um, the state seeking federal declaration or presidential declaration for a major disaster which would enable FEMA to give us seventy-five percent reimbursement on eligible costs that we incurred and damages that we incurred during the storm. So that is in the, uh, at the state level now, we submitted additional estimate of, estimate of, uh, eligible costs, and we're here, waiting to hear back from the state whether that could be a declaration for Essex County. So that's where we are in that case. Of course, the other two storms made, you know, each storm worse. The current storm, we're still trying to recover from that, uh, but we are communicating frequently, and we are requesting, we anticipate that we'll get state assistance with snow removal within, by tomorrow, and that could be the National Guard vehicles to haul snow, front loaders and haulers from the National Guard, the state of Pennsylvania, the state of New York, or the state of Vermont. That's what the state is pulling in to this day to help with all of the governments. So that's sort of the status of where we are with this storm.
Uh, Captain, would you touch on, on the parking?
Sure. Um, obviously, we had a parking ban, and as soon as the parking ban lifted, we implemented the, the one-sided parking ordinance for this storm. As you know, all the streets are very narrow, especially the secondary roads, um, so we are communicating with the mayor's office and trying to get that information out, that we use that one-sided ordinance and implement that. So sometimes communication is tough, but we're trying to break that up a little bit and get that word out.
Okay, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. President. Second, uh, the second item. I was approached a while back. Union Hospital is trying to get rid of their mobile plan. It's a, uh, it's a nineteen ninety-eight GMC chassis with a big box on the back. You may have seen that at the Commons years ago. Uh, it's got twenty-three thousand miles on it. Um, DPW was approached to see if they were interested, contacted me, and I said we could use that as a mobile van post. If we had a large-scale incident, if we have an event, needs management, use that as a place to communicate, coordinate any actions that occur. Similar to the flats we had a few years back, that vehicle should have been useful for us. Um, so the valuable part of that is the box, actually. We can remount that box, put it to DPW, onto a new vehicle. Um, so we were looking at it in a grant agreement with Union Hospital to provide a fire department SUV, nineteen ninety-four Explorer, seven nine thousand miles, that we do not use as a current emergency vehicle at this time. It's just sitting, it hasn't been used over a year. So we would enter a grant agreement to exchange vehicles for that mobile command post.
Goodness. And, uh, you had discussion with the mayor on this?
Yes, I spoke with the mayor on it today. Um, as long as everything is lined up, Council Law Department, she's okay with it.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion made to approve, uh, this is a motion made, uh, motion to approve the committee report?
Committee report.
Committee report for private public safety?
Other committee.
United or the committee? Sorry, any discussion? Motion made, seconded. Seeing no discussion, Roque.
Counsel Bud.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Jacutus.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Crichton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Sia.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Floyd.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net, absent Counsel Trahan, absent, nine yes.
Chief. Before we go, I just want to let you know that, uh, since Tom took over as Emergency Manager, when we have an event like we've had for the past three weeks, it makes it so much, it makes it so much easier for the departments to communicate. The, the communication between the departments over the last three years has been incredible. Uh, and with the meetings and the conference calls that we've been having all the time, it's nice to know who you're talking to. Uh, previous to the way Tom does things, uh, you pick up the phone and talk to someone down DPW, DPW men, or over the police station, you don't even know. But now they're sitting in the same room, and there's face-to-face recognition, and you understand their needs, they understand yours a little bit better, and it just makes things go so much more smoothly that you'd kind of be amazed at how things have gone over the past three weeks using that emergency management process. He's just done a great job, and I appreciate it, Bud.
Thank you. I think I speak for everyone in the room. We say we'd be very grateful for the work that you gentlemen do, and also the work of the many men and women in the city of Lynn, and all the agencies that have been dealing with an unprecedented storm over the last two weeks. I know some folks are just going twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and I just, and I'm just commenting from a council point of view, it's been tremendous communication through Chairman Barton with his work on our behalf for being involved in the conference calls and really having a seat at tables. We're grateful for your service too, Counsel Barton, and for all, all the hard work, because I know many of the councils around here are probably driving people crazy in this city, and it's not going to, it's not going to end anytime soon, unfortunately. So thank you again for your service, so be safe.
Thank you, bud.
You mean in a good way.
We have a number of public hearings to be set down. Unless there is an objection, we'd like to read them all at once and take the motion at the end. Seeing no objection, Madam Clerk, commence with the, with the reading.
Petition of Fiesta Show, Eugene Dean, for permission for a carnival for Fourth of July fireworks at Keene Park English High School, July third through Zell, twenty fifteen. Petition of Fiesta Show, Eugene Dean, for permission for a carnival for Fourth of July fireworks at McMahon's Park, Lindtak, May sixth through tenth, twenty fifteen. Petition of Walnut Street Cafe, James Chalmers, for permission for an all-alcohol license at one fifty-seven Walnut Street, with a wine and malt license currently there. Petition of Chadling Laundry, Garrett Zula, for permission for a change of use from commercial to residential. Tear down existing structure for new residential construction of three units at two ninety-four Chadling Street. Petition of Bell Tropical Restaurant, Louis Fortes, for permission for the air and wine license at existing restaurant at four twenty-nine Lineway. Petition of Comcast Timothy Broder, for permission to place an existing vault manhole on thirty-nine Gotham Street. One four-inch PVC conduit with one hundred twenty feet plus or minus in any silly direction to property of nine Gotham Street. Petition of Comcast Timothy Broder, for permission to place an existing vault manhole at one hundred blocks of Washington Street. Two four-inch PVC conduits, three hundred, ten feet plus or minus in an northwest direction up Washington Street. To Central Avenue, Andrew Street, place new manhole on Andrew Street. New manhole, place two four-inch PVC conduits, four hundred eight feet plus or minus, southwesterly on Andrew Street. To existing vault manhole on Andrew Street. Near intersection of Maggden Street, continue from existing vault manhole on Andrew Street, place two four-inch PVC conduits, three hundred sixty-five feet plus or minus, southwestally on Andrew Street. Southeastally on Maggden Street, southwestally on State Street, to existing vault manhole on State Street. From existing vault manhole on State Street, place one four-inch PVC conduit, seventy feet plus or minus, in a southerly direction to property of two State Street.
What's with the council? Motion made to set down, seconded, discussion seeing none. All those who say aye, opposed, no, the ayes have it.
Public Works Committee.
Counselors here.
Thank you, Mr. President. What I want to say, uh, kind of ties into this, I want to thank all the outlaws for, uh, helping all the councilors through this storm, and I know they had a pretty good taste, um, the past few weeks, what we deal with, um, especially during these storms. I know, uh, they were all fielding calls for all of us, and I just want to say thanks. I know how you guys were working. Pretty good. Um, the meeting tonight basically was about snow removal and, uh, the job that DPW's doing, and they begin tonight to get into some of the dead ends, and some of the terraces and places that's where the city are moving the snow from there. As the chief said, um, tomorrow they're hoping to start getting some, uh, heavy equipment in here. They're already using Caruso right now to remove some of the snow. They've actually began dumping some into the ocean. They've gotten approval from the state, and that's good. Uh, they're pushing back right now, a lot of the corners where the, the lights are. And the reason they're doing those, first is because the sensors aren't able to sense when a car comes up to the intersection. So it's important that we get those intersections open. We're also removing a lot of snow from the schools, in front of schools, and bus stops, and they're lighting all the main roadways. Uh, then they're going to get into the secondary streets. I know a lot of people are impatient, and they think that we should be getting in there, uh, right now. And I know everybody feels their situation is more important, but the DPW is really prioritizing along with the fire and the police department and parking. There's still a lot of roadways they're clearing up. Um, with the equipment, the manpower they've got, I think they've done an unbelievable job. I agree with what the chief and the captain said, that, uh, this has been a complete team effort on everybody in the city, and they've done an unbelievable job. So make a motion to stop the removal, approve, but that's third floor. Make a motion to approve.
Counselor Sia, motion made to accept the report, seconded. All those who say aye, opposed, no, the ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Trump.
Ordinance Committee, we have, um, two public hearings to be set down relative to proof, Paul Zone Ordinance, amending the zone map, the City of Lynn's zone ordinance regarding Boston Street, the site name review, and also waterfronts over three years.
Counsel Crichton. Mr. President, you've asked for the reading, motion. So I'm sorry, Major, who decided those were the streets? Aye, opposed, no, the ayes have it.
Government Administration has set down a public hearing relative to an act authorizing the City of Lynn to grant an additional liquor license for the sale of all alcoholic beverages not to be drunk on the front of premises.
Counsel Ford. Yes, move, move, seconded. All those who say aye, opposed, no, the ayes have it.
Ways and Means.
If there's no objection, we'll take them all, the others together, open the end, and they also do this request for emergency at the end as well.
Audit that the City Control and Band is hereby authorized to take the following action. Transfer the sum of two hundred fifty dollars and seventy-four cents from reserve account to the band and PR account. Transfer the sum of seven thousand five hundred dollars and zero cents from the reserve account to the treasurer's expense account. Transfer the sum of two thousand six hundred and zero cents from the reserve account to the collector's expense account. Transfer the sum of seven hundred dollars from the reserve account to the personnel expense account. Certifiers available fund the amount to eighty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars and zero cents as an audit to the City of Lynn DPW by the Department of Amen and Environmental Protection to fund fiscal year fifteen sustainable materials recovery program municipal grant with recycling works in length range period seven-one-fourteen to twelve-thirty-one-sixteen. An audit that are under the mayor is hereby authorized to execute the project funding agreement with the Massachusetts School Building Association for the repairs to the projects at William A. Conery Elementary School and E.J. Harrington Elementary School. And set down a public hearing on a proposed ordinance repealing the ordinance to establish a bill of rights for homeowners in the city of Lynn.
Counselor Calucci. Motion made to approve, seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, Roque, on the acceptance.
Uh, Counsel Bud.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Jacutus.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Crichton.
Present.
Present. Counsel Sia.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Floyd.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey.
Abstained.
Abstained. Counsel Net, absent. Counsel Trahan, absent.
We do not have the requisite, appears we may not have the requisite number of votes around the emergency. May I ask you the opinion of the Law Department?
We were talking about those to report emergency decisions at the last one.
Correct. If, uh, if members were to move themselves from the stage, would that give us the requisite, um, percentage? Or is it a hard key rule?
I'll do it immediately.
Okay. Okay, all right, Mr. President, I'd like to, okay, vote to approve the motion on the emergency.
Motion on emergency.
Motion is made to approve and seconded. Roque.
Counsel Bud.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Jacutus.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Crichton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Sia.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Floyd.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey.
Abstained.
Abstained. Counsel Net, absent. Counsel Trahan, absent, eight yes.
All right, any, any other, uh, oh, licensing.
Um, public property and plaques, oh, I'm sorry, license. Public property and plaques, oh, sorry, license?
Yeah, I spoke by committee, motion approved.
Seconded, all those who say aye, opposed, no, the ayes have it.
And public property place open to February twenty-fourth.
Thank you. Public safety, we previously did. Any other new business, old business? Motion to adjourn. Made, whoa. Diane, Counsel Chakutis?
Yeah, audit that the city of Lynn set down a public hearing in March tenth, twenty fourteen, to amend the order to allow snow removal. The city of Lynn to allow the city, a lake to remove snow from sidewalks and land, immediately abiding public sidewalks, ways of any property owner who has been sighted on three occasions.
Counsel Chakutis? I'm sorry, I think the folks had a hard time. Maybe I'm old too. If you could reread it to the microphone.
Audit that the city of Lynn set down a public hearing in March tenth, twenty fourteen, to amend the order to allow the snow removal of the city of Lynn, to allow the city of Lynn to remove snow from sidewalks and land, immediately abiding public sidewalks and ways of any property owner who has been sighted on three occasions, with the failure to comply with the existing ordinance, and permit the city to place a lien on said property to account the cost incurred by the city.
Motion has been made, Counsel Chakutis has seconded by Counsel Seh to sit down for a public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call?
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Crichton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Floyd?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Annette, absent. Counsel Trahan, absent.
Counsel Chakutis?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion is made to adjourn, seconded, opposed, no, the ayes have it. We are adjourned.